Every monitor isn't, I don't see a shit. The heck is that?
Get this too, or is this just?
We're not in control of them anymore. Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Uh, this is the regularly. The regularly scheduled meeting of the Yonah zoning board of appeals. I need some technical help. This is ridiculous. People are gonna have burnt out ears by the time we're done.
Really? I've never seen you so like, you sound like Oz.
Who is that?
You sound like Oz, yeah.
Yep, like Oz. Uh, yeah, just give us a minute if you would. We don't want to be yelling at you after all. Sounds better to me, I guess. Can you hear me all right out there? All right, so thank you, everybody, for your patience. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Amazon zoning board of appeals, and it's nice to see public, uh, input tonight. It looks really like we have interested people. We usually only have like one or two people in the audience. So it's really great to see y'all here. We'll try to get you as quick as we can. My name is Steve DeYoung, and I chair this board. Uh, we will now convene the August 25th meeting of the Yonah zoning board of appeals as required by general law, chapter 30A, sections 18 through 25, and pursuant to chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. What an act. The public are able to attend this meeting either in person or via the alternative public access. Members of the public may watch the meeting live on channel 18 or watch and/or participate in the meeting hosted in Zoom. The meeting notice provides necessary instructions to join the meeting via Zoom. Please note that audio, video, and screen sharing functions will be disabled for all attendees in the Zoom room. You must request to participate by using the raise hand function. Because the governor's order requires us to make all votes by roll call, I will now make a roll call to assure that we have a quorum. Mr. Igo.
Present.
Mr. Mantoni.
Present.
Mr. Frapery.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
And I'm present, so that's a five-member board. That's all we have, so it's a good thing we're all here tonight. What a pleasure. So we're now gonna start the meeting, and our first petition up is up, is that of 4974 Orion Family Amusements Incorporated of 1067 Route 28, South Yonah, Mass. That property sits in the zoning district B2. The applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 303.13 and/or variance pursuant to 303.5.5.2 of our zoning bylaws to add a second attached sign to the facade. The proposed sign is 60 inches tall, high, exceeds 60 square feet, and faces Route 28. This appears that its attorney singer is sitting in front of us. Good evening, Mr. Singer. Why don't you announce to the world who you are?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Andrew Singer, attorney on behalf of the applicant. With me at the table is Peter Campbell from Ryan Family Amusements. As start off, we had submitted a summary of reasoning and several plans. I would like to just note the sign we're seeking permission. We did have an error in our application. It actually is less than 60 square feet. So the sign is, this sign that we're seeking is actually the same size coloration as the sign you approved over the main entrance. As you know, uh, this building used to have multiple tenants, and it used to have multiple signs over each entry. We're here tonight before the mid, the center door, and that's the door where the ax throwing and cornhole portion of the business in the relocated game room is located. So when you go in that door, that's where you buy your tickets. That's where you do that business, you know, ideally. And you go in the main door, uh, which we'd previously proved, that's where the bowling, uh, you know, ticket counters would be. There is an interior connection, but what we're trying to do is get people from the parking lot into the correct door of the building. I likened it, um, if you look in the summary, similar to, almost like a department sign on a larger business where you have multiple entrances and you are trying to most efficiently and safely get people from the parking lot into the business. From the zoning point of view, while this is now a co-brand singly, it's a single occupied or co-branded location as opposed to a multiple business center any longer, the two signs, as you can clearly see on the plans, are not on parallel walls, which is otherwise, it's allowed. So the relief we're seeking, and we can discuss both special permit and/or variance, um, is to, A, have the second wall sign on the same wall. It's a very lengthy wall. It's much less than one-third of the running face. So overall size of the sign, overall length of the sign, from a square footage point of view, the first part, is fine. What relief is needed is not only because it's on a non-parallel wall, but also because, like the sign you previously approved at the main entrance, this matches it. So it's greater than two feet high. So it, while the square footage of the sign is otherwise okay, the dimensions of it as it's, you know, the rounded sign, the way it's shaped there, to match and to be architecturally consistent and aesthetically consistent, um, needs similar relief. We applied both under section 30313 and for variance from 1022 and 30312. 30313 does allow you the right to grant a special permit to vary relief from the signed bylaw if you find that in addition to the section 1032 requirements that the relief meets the spirit intent of the bylaw and will result in a visually and aesthetically beneficial result to the neighborhood. In the first, when you granted permission for the first sign, you did do that by way of variance in your decision. And, and I'm happy to go through those criteria as well. I do respectfully submit that if you would like and are willing to consider this as a special permit, that it does meet the special, the 1032 requirements. There would be no nuisance hazard or congestion. There will be no substantial harm to the existing or future character of the neighborhood. We argue that it does meet the intent of the bylaw to protect and serve the individual and economic, economic interest of residents while respecting community character and architectural design and public safety. I, and again, obviously, I'm biased in this, but I think the two signs with the updated facade that the business has done in the building actually look really nice. I think it, um, so I do believe there's no detriment or harm to the character. The size, the lettering, everything matches. So I do believe you could grant this a special permit. As a variance, um, I would respectfully argue that the same criteria that you looked at, um, previously also still applies, and it's the size of the lot. It's the size of the building. It's the shape of the building. It's the distance of the building back from Route 28. When you look at all of that, you want to have signs that are appropriately sized and functional for a building, you know, versus, for its size. And in this case, you are so far back from the road that having this second sign, which will match the first sign, except for the words on it, um, will not be visually a problem, and it will improve, uh, the access and the efficiency into the building. So we believe that there could, can be a hardship found based on the, um, you know, soil condition, shape, and topography, but it's of the structure in this case, which 48, section 10, and the zoning bylaw provide for. And we'd also submit that it would be not harmful to the public good nor detrimental to the zoning bylaw for the same reasons under the 1032 criteria, that there is no harm to the public good and that this act chastity will look good and will serve a good function. With that, if you have any other, any questions, we're happy to answer them. We can go through anything else in more detail if you like, but I'll stop there.
Mr. Mantoni, any questions of our petitioner's representative?
Not really. I don't have many questions. I, uh, I tend to agree with you. I read your summary of reasoning, and it seems to make sense. Both signs, exact same size. They are a good distance from the road, uh, and I think it's warranted. So I don't have any issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Igo.
Is there a possibility that we could make that sign a little bit smaller? I mean, you're really using it when people pull into the parking lot, correct? You're not trying to have it seen by Route 28. You're using it as directional, so the people are already in the parking lot. Could we mitigate that a little bit by? I don't mean you have to make it real small, but a little bit smaller than the other sign.
The, I, I mean, could it be done physically? I'm sure it could be. But what was trying to be done here, when you look at the facade of the building and over the entrances, both entrances are designed the same. They have the same awning. They have the same parapets and structural activity at those. And so the idea, thinking, and if you look at the building, they actually look relatively small on the buildings. The building is so long. So the thought was, this actually looks better because it would actually match. And you can't really, you're not looking at either sign really from the road. You know, there is a ground-mounted pylon, uh, brick base, sorry, planter sign down on the road. So this, the thought was that having them be the same size really is the most aesthetically pleasing. Otherwise, you're gonna have one oval and then an oval, you know, a ways down the building, just a little bit out of sync.
Okay. I do agree, given what you're trying to do there, it makes sense to have a sign to direct people into that ax throwing area. So you don't have everybody going in the main door. And then you have to tell them, now you gotta get out of the next entrance. So that does make sense. The old Daggett's Liquor sign that's up there on the left, is that your sign?
We're looking to... It's not a Ryan sign.
But is it your sign now?
Um, we, we leased, we leased the property right now.
You take that sign down?
What's that?
Can you take that sign down?
Um, we're looking to lease the property out. So down the road, we don't really know what's gonna happen with that.
Do you own the property? Do you control the property?
We leased the building.
Okay.
So they controlled that part of it, but there could be another tenant in there.
I'd like to see that sign come down, that.
It's an eyesore.
Can you take that down? If we make that a condition of your approval tonight, can you take?
Question for you, if, since there is another lease space in that, on the left side of the building where the handicap ramp goes up. If they do lease it out, you know, someone is gonna need some signage on that, but.
I wouldn't prejudice you about that. I'm just saying that right now, it looks like a terrible eyesore.
It's the old brackets that you're talking about. There's no words, and you're right, it's the bracket, the rectangular bracket.
As long as that wouldn't be held against us, you know, to lease it out down the road. Yeah, we could remove that.
I won't speak for anybody else, but I think it would look a lot nicer. You've done a great job.
I do too.
By the way, I think what you've done so far. Are you planning on carrying that same facade over to the left?
It's gonna depend who the tenant becomes.
I see. Now, the sign you have out on 28, that looks like it needs replacing. Is there a plan to replace that?
That's phase three.
Phase three? Okay. Will that be a similar sign, you think, or?
It, it won't be any bigger.
Okay.
It'll be, you know, when, when the time comes. We're actually trying to get away from the street sign. But if we, you know, down the road decide to go that route, it wouldn't be, uh, we wouldn't be here, I don't think, to ask them for a leave.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. That's all I had.
Mr. Frapery.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah, I'm not, not one facet, enjoying setting any precedent that I don't necessarily like to carry through, but I, I think the reasoning here is adequate to meet the criteria necessary to give relief. So I think it'll look better, and certainly the work that's been done there looks good, so.
Was that it?
That's it.
You know, I, I have, I think I've been pretty vocal about my feeling of changing anything on the sign code. It shouldn't be done through this board. It should be done through town meeting that addresses the problems that are very endemic in this sign code. And, and I really struggle with, how do we give you relief when we've churned down similar requests in the past? I, I can understand it if what we were doing was removing the Daggett sign and the landlord wanted, uh, wanted to make sure that he had, you know, permitted signs, should you vacate the property, should Ryan move, so that he wouldn't have to come back before the board. He could just do a similar sign. Is there a way to have, is there an entrance that's going to be over by the old Daggett's entrance?
Again, it's gonna depend who the tenant, um, there was 3,000, roughly 3,000 square feet over there that we're looking to lease out.
There is a door. There is an entrance there now, physically, not, forget the signs for a moment.
Is that gonna stay?
It would have to. I mean, that's the only way into that space, I would think.
Then why can't the sign go over there and use that as the entrance?
Well, it, it's not the same business.
What?
You mean this sign, Mr. Chairman, or a future sign?
Daggett sign.
Well, this, well, the sign that Mr. Igo is talking about, it's, it's not really a sign anymore. If you look up on, you know, it's that rectangular.
But it's been there forever, and they're trying to preserve it there so they can add a sign in later time.
Right, but what, what Mr. Campbell has said is that if, if that is something, if it's not going to prejudice a future tenant putting, getting signage, and there'll be something through the sign code, you know, for, for that third space, then, then you said it would be, he's okay removing the brackets from the old Daggett sign.
Well, I mean, again, I'm struggling with, how do we give you relief when we have dealt with this, not necessarily consistently, but usually by denying such requests? This is a, uh, you know, you guys do a beautiful job, and you should be very impressed with the way you run your businesses. It's gonna be a wonderful addition when this is all up and running. And is it up now with ax throwing? How's that going, the ax throwing?
Well.
Good. And you know, you, you've always run a very good business, and, and it's a nice thing to have in our town, some amusement for people other than the airpark, you know? And you guys provide it. But I, I'm just, wrap my head around it, I guess. I could look at that whole building and say, we all know there have been many, many signs on it. We can still buy used books, for example, down by Buc-E's. And the only problem is there are no books in there. And there's a floral shop, and thank goodness they're still selling flowers, so I can get out of trouble with my wife. But, you know, I, I see the signs, and Radio Shack's still over there, if you believe the sign. And so it's, it's a hodgepodge of signs, and I think this is actually.
It's a separate property, just for the record, but.
Sure, but it's, it's within a common plaza. And, and to, you know, to clean up those signs, I see as a benefit. I, I agree with Mr. Martin that you might meet the criteria. I'm concerned about that we are legislating the sign code here, and that's not what this board should be doing. It should be done at town, at a town meeting. But, um, I'm gonna listen to what comments I hear when we go to our board discussion deliberation before I commit myself, okay? And I'll let you know what it is before we bring it to a vote.
I might also point out, Mr. Chairman, that, that two things where I think you can rest more comfortably on that is that the zoning bylaw itself, under 303.552, gives you permission by special permit to provide relief. I'm sorry, 30313 gives you permission to provide relief by special permit from 303.552, so.
But this isn't a directional sign, right?
No, well, in a sense.
305.2?
303.552. Oh, I don't have my, I actually forgot to put my bylaw with me this evening. Mr. Frapery has it, I see.
We have an extra bylaw for.
Got it here. I got it here.
But while we're looking at that, Mr. Chairman, I'd also note, thank you. I'd also note that, though, as you did with the first sign, you, you have express authority under 48, section 10, and the zoning bylaw to grant variances. Granted, you have to find the criteria, and that's what you did on this very property, you know, for, for the main sign. But so respectfully, I think you do have the authority to, to grant, you know, variance relief. Also, under 303.5, so 303.552 is the singly occupied or co-branded business location. It says two single-face signs may be attached to opposite walls, no higher than two square feet, uh, no, sorry, no higher than two feet, no more than one-third the running face, 60 square feet per sign. You, everything you know. But 30313 expressly allows you to grant relief.
Grants the authority to.
By special permit. So it's not even legislating. It's by special permit, which you do much more often than variance even.
But I, I want to tell you, you cite to a 305.5.2, and I remember, I remember CVS when they built up on Station Ave. And we told them, no, you can't have two signs facing Station Ave. And they, if you look, you'll see one on, one wall and one on a perpendicular wall, because we wouldn't grant the relief you're asking for here tonight. And so I'm, I just.
But it also occasionally, if you also look at the Dunkin' Donuts on Forsyth, you granted relief to have those two signs, and I know, because we did it, on one facing the road and one facing, facing the two streets, which were not, again, on parallel walls. Because, again, given the unique situation.
Did I sit on that?
I, I don't, the Board of Appeals. I'm not sure. It was a long time ago.
I don't remember it, and I'd been here for a while.
CVS was a long time ago. It was 19 years ago, um, when we were here for that. But this is, um, you know, this, when you look at this, and every site is different, every site is unique. And this site has a much larger building than those other two examples and is much further back from the road.
Yeah. No, but for wanting to stay consistent, I am very supportive of it generally. Does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, come to lectern, please tell us who you are. Seeing none. Does anybody in our audience care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to that lecture and let us know who you are. Seeing none. We now close it to the public's input on the petition. We both open it up to board discussion deliberations. I'm gonna start something different tonight. We're gonna start with you tonight, Mr. Igo. What are your thoughts?
Well, first off, I think this is variance relief. I don't think it's special permit relief. And I am share your concerns about the intent of the bylaw. As everybody's aware in Yonah, we struggled for many, many years to get this sign code correctly, this signed bylaw done correctly. And I agree with you. We have people who come before us all the time, and we're very strict in our interpretation of the bylaw. I think we've given relief to this petitioner because they are a distance from the street. But this really is a second sign. That really, it's, it's not really, it is directional in a way, but it's advertising a business, is what it is. I mean, you could put up a directional sign, couldn't you? Someone's coming to the door, you could put ax throwing to the left outside.
Arguably, you could, but then you would also have two-thirds of the running face of a huge building just blank, you know?
I understand that. I understand that. I.
Can I interject just for a minute, Sean? Because it just occurred to me that we did the Kia dealership and allowed them two signs facing 28 because of their distance back from, from 28. So this is a pretty comparable distance. And again, I'm not trying to persuade anybody one way or the other. I'm just trying to remember back to when we've been confronted with this in various times, so. I think McDonald's, when they redid their facade, they, uh, I think they came in, I, I shouldn't say that, but I know they came in for some sign relief.
Is this a separate business, or is it the same business?
Part of the same business. In a section of the building that used to have a different business with a different sign, but this is part of this business, which you've approved, you know, through, through the process.
Well, I want to remain consistent with all petitioners. So I'm, you know, echoing your words. So I'm, uh, I'm still thinking about it right now, actually.
Mr. Mantoni.
I don't have much, I don't, I don't have the history with what we've done as a board in the past, so. The objection is two signs facing 28.
Yeah.
Not permitted in the bylaw. Right.
So there.
I wish it were, because I think it's an excellent sign for this.
Right.
For the utility of this building.
And as you said, though, you are, it would be consistent. And I'm not familiar with the Kia business, but in some of the other businesses that you've done properties, if there are unique circumstances, and you've cited examples where there weren't unique circumstances, so you didn't grant relief. But in certain situations where there are unique circumstances, you have allowed that. And if this was still a multiple business center, you could have the three wall signs. You know, it would, it's the, the parallel wall provision is under, for a singly occupied, and at the moment, that's what this is, although it wasn't in the past. So I think it is, there are unique circumstances in this case so that you would be being consistent with your past reviews.
Okay. Mr. Martin.
Well, I understand the, uh, hesitations of my fellow board members, and, and I would agree with them, actually. But I think there's enough separate cases here, and we have done some similar circumstances before. I mean, this almost looks like a multi-unit building. The doors are almost as if there's two different things going on there. Or three. And, uh, so, uh, and because of the extent of the building and the distance back from the road, and, I mean, in one sense, that door there almost looks funny without a sign. So I think taking all those things into consideration, I can see, uh, granting the desired relief.
Thank you.
Mr. Frapery.
I'm kinda going with Mr. Martin. The, the signs are like, I think they're 40 square feet.
40 square feet.
So they're under the maximum size anyway, in that regard. I, I think the setback, and I think it's actually good for, good for traffic to be able to find out where they're supposed to be going. It's had three in the past. I, I think it's a reasonable request.
What's the other sign say? Ryan Amusement?
Just Ryans.
Or just says Ryans, nothing else?
Ryans, Ryans Family Fun.
And this one's just, it has the logo on the top of it. Then it says ax throwing and cornhole.
And am I right that this end of the building is dedicated to ax throwing and what's the other thing?
Ax throwing, cornhole, and the arcade is located over there.
Always loved that game. Okay, so I mean, look, I can find so many ways to justify it. But I know that he and I have been very consistent on it, and I think the board has generally been. But I can see Mr. Martin and Mr. Frapery's point very well, because I think that there's something that persuaded me to the positive a little more, that Mr. Frapery just said, and it's traffic. If everybody saw only this sign, Ryan Amusement, they would crowd that end of that parking lot, and it would be like the old Daggett's, where you'd look down, there'd be nobody in that parking lot, but the other one would be full with, uh, speed bumps still out there?
We did away with the speed bumps.
So, um, you know, I can see, I, I think Mr. Frapery's right that it at least would help interior traffic flow by bringing people that want a cornhole or ax throwing up to this end of the building. I gotta go try ax throwing, I don't know.
Wonder if you could throw it at some people.
Yeah, I won't be able to throw it for you. So I don't know. I don't know. I'm torn, Mr. Igo. You and I have always been the ones, the protagonists of wanting to see the sign code changed, but.
Well, I, I do think they are setback. I, I think Dick made a good point, that it almost looks strange without a sign there. I could almost say they are, while they're the same owners, they are kind of separate businesses. I would like to see that Daggett's sign removed, that frame, if we approve this at all tonight. I think we should write in the decision that we're not going to prejudice any future petition of a separate business that may need a sign at that location. That's not to say we're gonna grant that. It's just to say that we're not going to prejudice them by taking it down.
Support that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and then we at least accomplish one really good thing over in that lot. And that's to get rid of that horrible structure, superstructure, so.
So that would be acceptable.
All right.
You need a motion.
Yeah, is anybody prepared to make a motion? Sure, let's move it along.
I'm, uh, making a motion that we approve the variance as requested with the condition that the frame of the old Daggett's Liquor sign be removed.
Second.
Dick, that was you?
Yep.
And as noted, that the petitioner will not be prejudiced in the future by the removal of that sign.
Add that to the draft, I suppose, right here.
But please say that we're not necessarily saying that you can have that sign, but we're just not going to. There was an existing sign there, and if there's another business that goes in there, that we'll look at that as a separate business.
So before we move it along to a vote, is there a timeframe we're going to give them to remove the sign, the sign frame? Instead of just leaving it out there, you, you gotta remove it?
At the same time, they put up the new sign, they'll take down the old sign. Plymouth gonna put that one up? Is that who you got, or somebody else?
A simple sign.
Simple, okay. They gotta, they gotta put it up with a cherry picker. They can just go up and share it right down.
All right. We have a motion with the condition, actually, two conditions, that the frame of the Daggett's sign be removed when the new sign is installed. And the second component of it in the notation, that there will be no prejudice to somebody coming in because the frame has been removed. But the petition for a sign there will need to stand on its own if they need relief from this board. Okay? Anybody wanna have a discussion on the motion before we go on? Nope, hearing none. Mr. Mr. Mantoni?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung is an aye, so our roll call vote ends with a 5-0 vote in favor of the motion with stated conditions. Oh, you have another request in there, don't you?
I, I heard what Mr. Igo said. I would respectfully request to withdraw the special permit request without prejudice.
Who's moving that?
So moved.
Mr. Martin moves. Second?
Second.
See, if I don't write copious notes, then I have to watch this video and that I find to be disturbing. Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing a draft decision.
Did you actually vote on the withdrawal?
Oh, we did. Sorry, we didn't. We have a motion. I'm sorry. Wanting to move it along, seeing there's some people here. The motion was moved seconded. Mr. Mantoni?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Myself, I'm an aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Governor Baker will be happy. We roll call voted. Our next matter up is that of a petition 4973 James and Mara Modestet. Am I saying that right?
Modestet.
Modestet?
Yes.
Of 219 Pleasant Street, South Yarmouth, Mass. That property is in an RS40 zoning district. Our applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 104.3.2, sub paragraph two, and/or a variance from sections 203.5 for front setback relief to construct a 55 by 35 foot barn with unfinished second floor. Would you identify yourselves for us, please?
Good evening. My name is Trevor Meyer with Meyer and Son Builders, representing.
Can you bring your voice up just a bit?
Sure. My name is Trevor Meyer with Meyer and Son Builders.
Okay.
Representing JM and Mara Modestet. I do have a couple of letters of support for the application, if I can.
Well, we'll get to the letters. Okay. I'll take care of this.
So, good evening. Thank you for hearing our request. As noted, we are requesting a special permit from 104.3.22. Also requesting dimensional relief variance from 203.5. Proposed is a 55 by 35 barn with three garage doors. So I'd just like to take a moment to outline kind of our design thoughts and how we arrived at the reason for the variance and special permit. So the lot currently possesses a pre-existing conforming lot and structure fairly level, 0.96 acres or 41,873 square feet with an existing lot coverage of 4.2%. The existing structure setback is 170 feet from Pleasant Street and 47 feet from Aunt Jane's. The original subdivision plan of this portion of the road was completed in 1957. Existing family structure is a one-story mortise and tenon style rustic log cabin, not consistent with the style of architecture that neighborhood customarily sees, but yet pre-existing. The original barn, which is now the cabin, was moved here from the 50s in New Hampshire, from New Hampshire and reconstructed on this lot. Over the years, it's been minimally upgraded slash modified, and the look has been maintained. 219 Pleasant Street provides a unique situation based on the shape of the lot, long and linear, and the existing house being that far setback. It being on a corner lot and heavily vegetated. These items were considered in going into the planning and design phase of this project. It should be noted that the bounds were installed on the north property line at the expense of the client, at the expense of the client, which the neighbor to the north had questioned the validity of the location of the survey. We believe it was worth noting that while the accessory use is allowed by right, part of the Towny Yarmouth bylaw, the project could have been cited to the south of the existing home within a dimensional variance, without a dimensional variance and/or a special permit. However, we feel it would not have given the desired result. We believe that the proposal for an extension would cause or contribute to an undue nuisance hazard or congestion if it were presented that way. Meaning if we pulled it forward of the lot towards Pleasant Street, that it would be more of a nuisance to the neighborhood than if it is located where we have proposed it. We also believe that the eject is set forth in 103.3.1 for a special permit, 2, 6, and 7 would be negatively impacted. By connecting and citing the proposed barn structure to the northwest of the existing building and having the entrance off Aunt Jane's, which all the lots have legal rights over, the design element issues were, in our opinion, minimized, and thus we maintain the character of the neighborhood and cut down less trees. The design of the barn could have been, could, could not have been better designed to be in more keeping with the neighborhood with white cedar shingles, asphalt roof, white trim, white Anderson windows. While we are asking for relief from the front setback of 9.5 feet, it's worth noting that the proposed distance from the barn to Aunt Jane's Road, road edge or pavement line would be 35 feet. On paper, Aunt Jane's Road's width is 40 feet, 25 of which is actually pavement, 10 feet, there's a vegetative buffer, and 5 foot, there's a drainage adjustment. Therefore, the actual road edge to the property line is 15 feet currently of vegetated buffer. This will give the appearance that the building sighting is consistent with the neighborhood. This is better shown on the site plan. See the dashed lines across the south side of the property. We are under the interpretation that making the barn comply with a 30-foot setback on Aunt Jane's lot line would create an undue nuisance or hardship for the client to prospectively, needing an alternative septic, creating a design issue on how the house and the barn and the courtyard to the rear connect. And it also increases the number of trees that would need to be removed. The proposed structure, we believe, is in keeping with the neighborhood. Not to cause any more traffic than any other residential uses will generate increased revenue from taxes. Lot coverage percentage is only 8.9 of the allowed 25%, and the height of the barn is within the allowed limit of 35 feet. Want to thank you, the board, for their time. If you have any questions, please let me know.
What did you say lot coverage was?
Currently, it's 4.7% and it's going to 8.9.
Okay. Mr. Martin, any questions of the petitioner's representative?
It would appear that the barn could be built conforming if it was toward the front of the house toward Pleasant Street, right? And the reason for not doing that would be?
Just appeasing the Pleasant Street side of the, the road. We felt like it would be more of a nuisance if we entered from Pleasant Street and you would have to cut more trees, thus changing the, kind of the character of the front yard. We have two fronts. So I say front, I mean Pleasant Street.
I understand that, but then unfortunately it just becomes, you know, quite ominous in terms of its overall size, which is kind of out of character with the rest of the site in proximity to Aunt Jane's Road and the immediate neighbors, certainly on Aunt Jane's anyways. It's kind of like it's being scrunched into, into that corner. I mean, it's a beautiful lot and there's beautiful trees and it's a beautiful area, of course. And, and in one sense, I'd hate to see it out front too. But on the other hand, it becomes overbearing, I think, when you're looking for a 10-foot variance from the street setback, especially for such a big building that's essentially two and a half stories tall and much bigger than the existing house that's here right now. I think it's going to be just somewhat overwhelming. The barn doors are not accessible for vehicles, correct?
They're false.
Okay. And the size of the upstairs is just for hobbies or, I mean, is it the intention of this becoming house and the other house going away at some point or?
I don't believe the other house is going to go away because there is a connector between the two. So yeah, that currently the upstairs is set to be unfinished storage slash hobby space.
Big space. You know, I just, and it's a big space. It's a big wall. You're going up, you know, the two and a half, two and a half stories right on the street side there. I just think it's, I think, I personally think it's kind of overbearing to at least some of those neighbors. And I understand the reasoning for it. It's a big lot and it would accommodate this one way or another. But I, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that being the proper location for that size structure.
Mr. Frapery?
There's a, there's another entrance off of Aunt Jane's little driveway that, that's down about where you have the utility pole on this map.
Yep.
Is there a reason why, I mean, is it, where's the septic exactly?
The current septic?
Yes.
Behind the proposed building.
Okay. Is there a reason why you could, I mean, it just seems like that would be a natural place to put it also, which is?
The telephone pole kind of interacts with where the door locations are currently pre, if we were to put it there. So that, that poses a little bit of an issue. The connection point of the house is the most ideal on the backside where we, where we have it versus where, where you're ideally proposing it. I mean, it's a function and a flow of the existing house that ties into, you know, the barn itself. So you're right. I, like we said, we could put it over there and we would not have to come before the board. The, the idea here is reducing the impact, which we felt like reducing the impact would be tucking it back in that corner to minimize the look from the street.
The lot is so wooded, I don't know that, you know, moving it forward to that area would really be a problem from Pleasant Street. And I think it would, it would mitigate some of the issues around Jane. So it's a very, it's a very big, it's a very big structure considering.
Still, from your perspective, it would still be coming off Aunt Jane's?
I understand that.
Okay. That I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, no, I don't think you should put it on, on Pleasant Street itself. But I just think it would be a better place for it. It's an awfully large structure. It is directly, directly opposite one of your neighbors at that point in time, the way it's placed. So it would be tough, tough looking right out the front yard at that. But those are my questions.
Mr. Diago? Thank you. Before I ask any questions, I just want to clarify some things with the board. Granted here, I don't think we can grant any special permit relief for a couple of reasons. First of all, this is a conforming lot. It's not a pre-existing, legally pre-existing, non-conforming lot. So it wouldn't be separate or extension. Secondly, there are no other non-conformities on the property. So this would be a brand new one introduced. So it would require variance relief.
No, sir. No, sir. Sir? No. We'll call on you. You can't hear? Speak up. Can you hear me now?
Hear anything I said? Nothing? Okay. Okay. I don't think we can grant special permit relief. I think it has to be a variance because there's no non-conformities. It's not a pre-existing, non-conforming lot as well. The lot conforms to the dimensional requirements. There's no non-conformities on the property as it exists. And they're introducing a new one. So it would require a variance. Now, my question to the petitioner is, how do you qualify for variance under the bylaw?
Basically, in my narrative, we.
Again, if you keep your voice up because people are.
In the narrative, I kind of called out shape. So that was our.
You think there's a hardship owing to the shape of the lot?
That's correct.
But you have the ability to, to place this in a conforming spot. So how would there be? The hardship, I think you're telling us, if I'm not mistaken, is you don't want to cut down any trees.
There's trees anywhere.
To place it where.
From a perspective of, of that being the hardship, I believe also I noted that moving the septic and the expense associated with, with both kind of created the hardship based on the shape.
Why would you have to move the septic?
If we wanted to conform, we would have to move the septic. Why? Because it would be.
You're building a garage, right? Why do you need a septic system for a garage?
In other words, why couldn't it go on the side where the patio is shown on the plan?
Well, I guess I'm still in the, under the interpretation that we could put it conforming where we would like it, and it would have to move the septic in order to do so. It is.
Well, you might be able to do that if you want to move the septic. But you're not demonstrating a hardship for variance right now where it's located.
Understand.
That's what's before us tonight. We're not, what's before, if you move it back 10 feet, that's not before us right now. It's 20 feet from the front setback.
Correct.
So how would you meet the criteria?
Understandably, there might, there might not be a meeting the criteria for variance.
Okay. I don't think you meet the criteria for variance either. And so I would not be able to support this petition tonight. I think you could put it in a spot that it might conform. And if you need relief, I would suggest that, I don't think the size of the structure that you're talking about building is in keeping with this neighborhood. I think it's overbearing myself. I think it would have a negative impact on the neighbors and the surrounding neighborhood. And that concerns me, not only here, but in any neighborhood in Yarmouth. So I would have a hard time if you were here for special permit relief, but you're here for variance and I don't think you qualify. So I just want to be clear that I would not be able to support this tonight. Thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you, Mr. Mantoni.
I'm sorry, where is the septic again in relationship?
I believe it's shown on the site plan. It's behind the proposed building.
It's behind. It's. Oh, all right. Okay, thank you. Is there a full basement?
No.
On this, no.
That was an incorrect statement.
And the purpose for this is to house automobiles or?
So, yeah, I mean, he, it's a hobby kind of thing. He has cars. I know we can only have three cars according to the Board of Appeals special permit application, separate from this. Boat, inside boat storage. He does have an RV that he would like to store inside, high cube RV. So that's, those are the reasons for the, the tall garage doors. They're specific to the proposed use.
So there'll be three vehicles?
Yes.
Stored in the garage. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Am I right that there was a previous design that showed the rake of the roof substantially greater without the loft being shown?
There was one previous design where we showed only one dormer on one side. The revised design shows dormers on both sides.
What's the purpose of upstairs?
Arts and crafts. There is potential future expansion if, if you want to look at it that way. You know, I, I think they're well within the bylaw to assume that area. There's a, there's a lot that's 41,000 square feet. It can have four bedrooms. The current, you know, size of the house is two bedrooms.
Okay. Well, I don't, I mean, I've got a bunch more questions, but I have to tell you, I will never vote on a petition that increases or creates conform, a non-conformity.
Understood.
Just, I can't do it. That's, that we're here to enforce the bylaws. We're not here to act like they don't exist. And there's, there's just nothing. I'm very familiar with the lot. I don't live far from it. And I got to tell you something, it's all flat stuff over there. I think it can be built out in front. It's just an aesthetic thing for the owner, and I appreciate that. But you can't come and create a non-conformity. It's just.
We, we were not trying to do so. And the reason I think our application veered in that direction was just at the suggestion of Mr. Grills based on his review and our discussion of it. So. My apologies. You know, I think.
No, no, nobody's faulting you.
I think in our.
People come in and ask the things all the time, but we can't always grant them.
I understand.
And, and you know, it's not be, I'm not necessarily as concerned, but although I think it's a behemoth for a garage. I mean, I, I don't know. I wonder if I could get away with building something like that. Am I three and a half acres? I don't know. But, you know, it's a big, big facility. I don't understand the need for the loft. I think I'm looking at plans that show me that there's a washer, dryer and sink going in on some floor of this. I can't tell, is it loft or?
First floor, like the, it would be on the first floor.
Yeah. And so that plumbing can become a bathroom real quick. And I don't know. I, I will not be able to support it this evening. So as you've just heard, I'm not lockstep with Mr. Igo, but I am certainly on tonight that this is a non-conformity that we're not going to create.
Yeah, understand. I think I'd like to withdraw the application without prejudice if that would be all right with the board.
Sure.
Okay.
So is that both the variance request and special permit?
At this time, I, I think we, we can do that because if we did a separate application for something different, then, you know, it would likely conform and we would need, you know, Board of Appeals approval for three garage doors if we went a different direction.
Okay. Anybody prepared to make a motion? Mr. Igo moves to.
Both forms of relief without prejudice.
Second.
Request for.
Martin, second? Martin, second. All right. Any board care to have any discussion before moving along to a vote, hearing none. Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Mintoni?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So we're allowing it to be withdrawn without prejudice, and that's both forms of relief. Okay?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much. It's always good to see you. So for those people that are here that wanted to weigh in on this, there's absolutely no need, nor are we going to read letters because the relief isn't being granted. Okay? And if we're going to exit, I'd ask that you do it quietly if you're going to do it en masse. Thank you. Thank you all for coming out tonight. It really does mean a lot to us when we see the public want to weigh in on these. So that's great. It brings us to our next petition, 4963, a matter continued from July 14 of 22. It's the Cape Cod Hospital in Winterberry Solar LLC, wholly owned by NextGrid Incorporated. I think the hardest thing I've ever seen to anybody, any lawyer do in court is to just stand there and say nothing.
It's true.
So it's concerning property located at, in the zoning district B1 and R25 and partially in the APD. The applicant seeks to modify an existing special permit, which is given number 4715, pursuant to 102.2 of our bylaws in order to construct canopy-mounted solar, solar panels over an existing Cape Cod Hospital parking lot, along with three ground-mounted equipment pads and utility poles, or alternatively, or inclusive of a variance under 102.2, to allow for installation of solar canopy structures as accessory to the parking lot. Good evening. Would you tell us who you are?
Thank you. Yes, indeed. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney at Nutter McLennan and Fish, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicants. Members of our project team are also participating by Zoom, and I'll introduce them. Michael Boxton, who's the Vice President of Facilities for Cape Cod Healthcare, is on, on electronically, as is Daniel Cerber, who is the Senior Director of Land Development for NextGrid, and Brian Yergachian, who is the engineer from BSC Group, is also participating by Zoom.
Sure.
Could I just pause?
Sure.
It's been brought to my attention that the chairman of the board, Tony, has not sat on this notice.
It, it was never open.
It was, yeah, correct.
No, all we did was continue with that.
Thank you.
I, I had the same fear as this one I, I missed, but I remember it was just, I don't even think anybody appeared.
I had, had a death in my family, and I appreciate the board continuing.
You don't need to go into it, please. And so that was, no evidence was taken, no presentation was provided.
That's correct.
All right. So you go right ahead, Attorney Cox.
Sure. So we're here, here before you this evening on behalf of the applicants, Cape Cod Healthcare Hospital, sorry, Cape Cod Hospital, which owns the properties that are the subject of this application, and Winterberry Solar LLC, which is owned by NextGrid and is a solar company. And we're seeking to modify a zoning decision that was issued by this board in 2017. In the alternative, we've also filed for a variance for the proposed solar installation. As the board may recall, my former colleague, who now is living in Panama with her family, Attorney Jeanie Campus, was back before this board in early spring of this year. I think there were two hearings regarding this project at that time. And after those two hearings, the board granted the request that was made to withdraw that application without prejudice. Since withdrawing the matter, I have had a couple of discussions with the building commissioner regarding this project and the relief requested. And ultimately, we refiled the application in June of this year, which seeks the same relief that was sought in March, but also includes in the alternative a variance, which, as I'll describe shortly, I, I do not believe is needed. In addition, I would note that after this application was withdrawn, there was a decision that came out of the Supreme Judicial Court interpreting the provisions under 48, Section 3 pertaining to solar. I'll discuss that shortly, but that is the first appellate decision interpreting that section of the Zoning Act. Because this is a new application, I'm going to briefly describe the project. I know many of you were involved when it was before you in March, so you're probably generally familiar, but this is the first hearing on the substantive hearing on this reapplication. So the property, which is shown on the plans that were submitted, is improved with a parking lot, which is used by Cape Cod Hospital for its employees. The current configuration of that parking lot was approved by the board in 2017 in special permit decision 4715, which was attached to the application materials that we submitted. The site consists of about 600,000 square feet, a little over 13 acres, almost 14 acres. So it's a, a large tract of land. It's located within the B1 zoning district and the R25 zoning district. Any portion of the site is located within the Aquifer Protection District. Some of the easterly portions of the property are located within 100 feet of a wetland resource area. As depicted on the plans that were submitted, the applicants are seeking to construct solar arrays over portions of the existing paved parking area on the property. In total, there are 12 arrays that are shown, along with three equipment pads, which will house two battery storage containers and two inverters for the solar installation. Significantly, I would note that the batteries and inverters are located outside of the Aquifer Protection District and outside of the State Zone 2 portions on the property. Additionally, as is noted on the plan submitted, the applicants have identified a few trees from the approved 2017 plans of the prior decision that are missing, and those are proposed, as noted, to be replanted. The plan also identifies a number of trees that are not terribly healthy, and those will be replaced as well. Finally, although some of the existing buffer trees along the edges of the parking area will have to be removed to accommodate the installation of one of the solar array canopies, those trees are proposed to be replaced with new trees, just moved slightly to the west, but roughly in the same location. This project has already been reviewed by the Yarmouth Conservation Commission, as there are portions that are within the 100-foot buffer, and the commission issued a determination of non-applicability allowing the work. In addition, site plan review and design review have been completed. In addition, the applicants have worked very closely with the Fire Department and Health Department on this project. As part of the application materials, we submitted letters from both. The letter from the Fire Department confirmed that we had addressed all of the comments and questions that they had, and specifically, the plans were amended as a result of those conversations to include a fire hydrant and standpipe near the southwest corner of the property. It's just to the left of canopy number nine, shown on the site plan, and also protective bollards around the easterly and southerly sides of the equipment pads. In addition, in your file and attached to our application is a long memorandum from Mr. Carl Lawson at the Health Department confirming that the applicants will be able to comply with the Board of Health regulations, and including that additional safeguards were provided beyond the requirements of the Board of Health. So in terms of the zoning relief, as I noted at the outset and as contained in our lengthy addendum to the application, the proposed solar use is a use that is protected under the Dover Amendment, which is Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 3, and the components of the solar canopies themselves comply with all of the dimensional and bulk requirements of the zoning bylaw. However, because there is that existing special permit for the site, we are here seeking your approval to modify that decision. That special permit, number 4715, contains the following two conditions, which we seek to modify. First is the condition that the project must be constructed in accordance with.
I'm, I'm sorry. If I just, I don't have that decision. Everybody get that decision?
It was Exhibit A to the packet. Yeah.
And this?
Yes. Yes. Oh, yeah.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Sure, no problem. So the first that we're seeking to modify is the first condition, which conditioned the project to be constructed in accordance with the 2017 parking plans. And the second is the condition that there be no hazardous materials stored on the subject property. Specifically, we're seeking to amend Condition 1 of that special permit decision to reflect the plans that we've submitted with this application. I, I do note that there are no changes proposed to the underlying parking layout or to the use of the underlying parking. In addition, we are seeking to modify Condition 3 of that decision to state that there will be no hazardous materials stored on the portion of the property within the Aquifer Protection District. As I mentioned, the equipment pads where the battery and inverter storage are located outside of the APD. And I went into, went through it in some detail in the memorandum that we submitted, but wanted to just take a moment to go over the case law and the law as it relates to solar. So 48, Section 3, which is the so-called Dover Amendment, and is entitled, "Subjects Which Zoning May Not Regulate" exemptions, public hearings, and then temporary manufactured home residences, contains in its ninth paragraph, the applicable provision as it pertains to solar, and it provides that "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary, to protect the public health, safety, or welfare."
What were you just saying?
That's for, that's the ninth paragraph of 48, Section 3. That's the Dover Amendment.
That's a verbatim of that.
That's verbatim, yes. In addition, 48, Section 1A, which is the Definitions Section for the Zoning Act, has a definition of solar energy, and I am paraphrasing this to take out the provisions that aren't applicable, but it is defined as "a device or structural design feature, a substantial portion of which is to provide for the collection, storage, and distribution of solar energy for electricity generating." So that's the definition of a solar energy system as used in the ninth paragraph of the Dover Amendment. As I mentioned, there is a recent Supreme Judicial Court decision on that section of the Dover Amendment. It is the first time that the SJC has interpreted this provision. The decision is Tracer Lane 2 Realty LLC, the town of Waltham, and it was issued in June 2 of this year.
Do you have a booking page, Dave?
Yes.
You have the decision?
I have, I can give you, I've highlighted sections of it, but I'm happy to.
Possible to pass it up if we returned it to you? Thank you. And you've highlighted the provisions we should be looking at? All right. Thank you very much, Attorney Cox.
No, thank you for asking. I, I, I have some notes that I was going to read.
I don't need it back?
I, I don't think so, no.
Okay, then I'm going to stamp it and call it an exhibit.
That's fine. So the facts of that decision are essentially that there was a developer that sought to build a road through residential land in the town of Wealth, Waltham, to access land in the abutting town of Lexington, where it proposed a ground-mounted solar array. Waltham, the town of Waltham, advised that developer that it could not build the road through the residential land because solar would be a commercial use that was not allowed in the residential district in Waltham. The developer appealed to the land court, and the land court found that the access road was ancillary to the solar use and therefore protected under the Dover Amendment, and ordered the town to allow the road. Waltham, the town, appealed, and the SJC transferred the case for direct appellate review. In its reasoning, the SJC in the decision reviewed the history of the solar provision in the Dover Amendment. And I'm quoting, it says, "When interpreting this paragraph, we keep in mind that it was enacted to help promote solar energy generation throughout the Commonwealth." The SJC also found that, given the access road's importance to the primary solar energy generation, collection system, it indicated that we conclude that the access road is part of the solar energy system. In the case, the parties also disputed the extent to which the Waltham zoning bylaw allowed solar energy systems. The developer argued that the zoning bylaw did not permit them at all because the bylaw, like the town of Yarmouth's bylaw, does not mention solar energy systems in the use code. The town argued that they were allowed in the industrial districts, which only represented a very small portion of the town, or under the general sort of accessory structure use provision of the bylaw. With respect to that accessory provision and argument, the court stated that standalone, large-scale systems, not ancillary to any residential or commercial use, are key to help promoting solar energy in the Commonwealth. And ultimately went on to hold that an outright ban of large-scale solar energy systems in all but 1% or 2% of a municipality's land area, however, restricts rather than promotes the legislative goal of promoting solar energy. In the absence of a reasonable basis grounded in public health, safety, or welfare, such a prohibition is impermissible under the provision of the Dover Amendment. And so it affirmed the land court's decision and judgment to allow the access road. Here, the town of Yarmouth contains no provisions allowing solar in any of the town's zoning districts. And so it continues to remain our permission, our position that the use, including the structures, which are collectively the solar energy, solar energy system, are protected under the Dover and therefore allowed. And so we do not, we filed for the variance in the alternative. I did, as I mentioned, meet with the building commissioner. He did not think the variance was needed. I also do not think the variance is needed, particularly in light of that decision, which specifically refers to large-scale solar, solar energy systems, not just, not just accessory. And so it is our position that we don't need the variance. I'm prepared to withdraw that without prejudice, but would ask the board first act on the request to modify the conditions of special permit 4715 to reflect, number one, the plans that are submitted with this application, and clarify, as it relates to the hazardous materials, that no hazardous materials would be stored within the portion of the property within the Aquifer Protection District. Again, there's a lot more detail in the addendum and materials that we submitted, but I think I'll pause and ask the board if it has any questions. And again, members of our team are here, if there's other questions for them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mintoni, any questions of our petition?
None at this time.
All right. Mr. Igo?
Yes. I looked at that decision. And I agree with it. I understand it. Okay. They were talking about a road that ran through the town. What, and you were here at the last hearing where I voiced my objection to this on the basis of the structures that you were using to support the solar arrays. Is it your position that any structure used to support a solar array should be permissible? And let me just, before you answer that question, let me ask you this. If you were proposing to put those on 120-foot-high stanchions, do you think that would be a reasonable structure to put them on?
Well, we're not.
Well, if you were, that's a hypothetical question.
I mean, I guess that structure would not comply with the height requirements of your bylaw. This structure does. This structure does.
How about if it's 30, under 35 feet?
I think if the use of that structure is for the purpose of capturing solar for energy distribution, then it falls under the definition of solar energy system under the definitional section of 48, Section 1A, and would be covered by the Dover Amendment. But here, that's not what's proposed.
Well, would you agree that what you're proposing to put up, these are not the normal structures that you use to support them?
No, in fact, these are quite typical for solar installations over parking areas, which is the type of installation, frankly, that the Commonwealth and our Regional County Planning Agency encourages. And that is because it doesn't require the clearing of additional land, so they actually encourage these type of installations over existing developed areas. And there are several up and down the Cape. RH, the, the former RHCI, the rehab hospital in Sandwich, they have it in their parking lot, I think.
So, you're saying that they have carports, and then they build them on top of that?
I'm saying that they have solar canopies over the parking areas. The purpose of these structures is to create platforms for the placement of the solar arrays, and that's the purpose there. That's what's proposed here. There's, I think, the hockey rink in Falmouth. I think they have some on there, over their parking lot. Daniel, who's on our Zoom call, he may have other examples, and maybe all of you do too.
Do you have any pictures of any of those with you?
Um, I don't. Daniel, do you have any photos, or I could ask one of the folks on our Zoom to share their screen and, you know, pull up Google Earth.
I wasn't aware of that, but, and they were allowed, they've been built anywhere on the Cape?
Yes.
The, the issue that I have here is, if, if you came in here and you were not looking to put a solar array on top of these carports, how would you propose this to the board? Would you propose this as what?
And.
If you, if the hospital wanted to just put carports in, would you come in and look to?
Well, I wouldn't be filing under the Dover Amendment. I don't think it would apply.
I understand that, okay? I understand the Dover Amendment.
Yep.
But I'm just saying to you, if you came in and you were just looking, the hospital wanted to build carports, how would you file that request for relief?
I would say they're an accessory structure to the parking lot, but again, that's not.
Accessory to what?
The, the parking use.
What's the principle, what would be the accessory? Don't you need a principal structure for an accessory use?
Well, the, the parking itself, I mean, that would be, I think, accessory to the parking area. But again, that's not what's proposed here.
Oh, I understand that.
I know you, you think these are, you've characterized these a couple of times as carports, and I know you did that last time, and I just, I guess I would just respectfully disagree with you. I think these are solar canopies, the dominant purpose.
I thought you used the word carport.
I use solar canopies.
Okay, I thought in the first presentation.
I say potato, you say potato, let's move on from it.
And again, I would just refer you back to the definition of 48, Section 1, as to what constitutes a solar energy system, and it's a structural design feature, a substantial portion of which is to provide for the distribution, or the, sorry, the collection of energy, electricity generating. And so, again, I think this falls neatly within that definition.
I, I agree with that definition. I, I don't have a problem with the definition. I don't have a problem with the solar arrays. The only problem that I have is that, as I asked, is the structure that you're using. I think you're, you're constructing a commercial parking garage. That's how I see it, and I think it requires a variance. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mantoni.
No questions.
Oh, I already started with you, didn't I? I'm sorry, Jay, any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. I, I guess, first of, my first question is, can you tell me the life of the structures? Like, what the planned life of the, the arrays, as well as the, the structures themselves?
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Mr. Cerber to respond to that? That's outside my area of expertise.
Sure, can you invite?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, thanks for having me. Again, Daniel Cerber, Senior Development Director with NextGrid. We have a 20-year contract with Eversource to provide power to the grid. We anticipate a five-year extension, so the, the life of the solar facility would be 25 years. That's the anticipated life. The structures are steel, and they're coated to be rust-proof, so their theoretical life, if you're, if you're asking if they'll degrade, you know, not in any of our lifetimes.
Thank you.
Would you call that 100 years, is that a reasonable number?
So, we do provide decommissioning, so we can remove the structures themselves after our, our contract with the utility. But if you're just asking theoretically how long these things could last without a contract with the utility, 100 years is, is a fine radius.
And there is, there is a condition in there for decommissioning these and removing them after the contract?
That is the plan.
No, is it, he didn't ask for that, though?
Yeah, is it in the contract?
Our contract with the hospital? It's actually, I'm not positive, but it's not a requirement of our contract with Eversource.
I want to make sure that that was.
Well, you, you weren't asking about the contract with the hospital. You were talking about the, the grid, the sale of the electricity to the grid. What, wasn't that your question?
No, it was, it was really the structures. My, my concern is if a contract goes away, the structure should go away, and I want to know that that's gonna happen.
It's like we talked about when we talk about windmills, right? We gotta know they're gonna be removed.
That, that's my question. And is that under contract, that they would go?
Liza, it's Mike Boxton, can I speak for the hospital?
Yes.
So, this is Mike Boxton with Cape Cod Healthcare. So, I oversee all the real estate, and yes, uh, myself, Mike Loth, signed this contract, and yes, it has provisions for the de-installation of the canopies, and if for some reason the NextGrid or their partner with Eversource would default in any way, under the contract, that that, those solar canopies would be, would be decommissioned at NextGrid's cost.
Okay. And you can provide that to the board as part of the.
Yes. Can I, can I just ask a question, sir, before you leave us? So, you say, if, if the, if the contracted defaults or completes the contract, then they could be removed. Is there anything that requires their removal? Once they start, once they stop being used as a support for a solar array?
This is Mike Boxton with the hospital, can I speak on that? So, we would never, we, uh, these, uh, these exact solar canopies were erected in Mashpee at Christ the King Church. If you've been over there in that area, you've probably seen the canopies, very similar in size and scale to these. And they, they could never be used, the, the foundations or anything else could never be used to support a, a structure like a car, like a parking garage or anything like that on top of it, because these structures are designed for uplift and specifically to hold those solar canopy caps on. So, at the hospital, I'm a licensed architect, I would never, we would never use those structures to build a building on.
Yeah, you know, you know, that, that didn't address my question at all. So, my question specifically is, is there any provision between the contractor and, and the grid, or, or Eversource, or the hospital and Eversource, or the hospital and the contractor, the solar contractor, that requires the removal of these structures if they cease to operate as solar, as a solar array?
Yes.
Where, it's, where is it?
I have the contract, I can reduce it.
The article and, and the paragraph number. I'm just saying, in which contract is it, sir?
It's in the, it's in a contract agreement, this is Mike Boxton again. It's in a contract agreement between Cape Cod Healthcare and NextGrid as our contractor of, of this project.
Is it in the lease, Mike?
Yes.
Get a copy of that, right, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much, I don't have any other questions, sir, of you.
I have a couple more.
Oh, you can go, Michael?
Oh, no, I meant in general.
Okay, sure, go right ahead, go right ahead.
Um, what is the, what is the megawatts production of this, this facility doing?
Daniel, do you want to answer that?
I was muted. This is gonna be approximately 3 megawatts DC and 999 kilowatts AC.
All right, and my understanding is it's not going directly to the hospital, so it's not providing backup to the hospital directly, it's just going to the grid?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. I, I, I'll be honest with you, I mean, I'm sure that this has a, a large, a large tax rebate involved with it and everything, and the state's promoting solar, but these are not simple structures. These are fairly significant, significant structures made out of steel. And if you go through the life cycle of it, I gotta think that we're producing an awful lot, using an awful lot of energy to produce something that I question how much they're getting out of it. But, but, but aside from that, that's not something that I can have any control over. But I think the state really needs to evaluate this better to approve things that have a better delivery of solar power to the grid from a cost perspective, so.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, any questions?
Not really, I'm pretty comfortable with the previous presentation in this one in terms of what's going on, and I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay, thank you, I have a couple of questions. So, what is the hazardous material that we're concerned about is not within the APD?
Not within the APD. If you look at Mr. Lawson's memorandum, which was included in Exhibit B, it pertains to what's in the lithium ion batteries. And again, I would refer to Daniel, if you want to jump in and talk about this, but the, as indicated in the memorandum from Mr. Lawson, the required containments that the Board of Health requires in its regulation are proposed, and in fact, we actually exceed the containments that the Board of Health regulation proposes. So, we met with Mr. Lawson back and forth by emails, and I believe there was a meeting to, to go over this, to obtain this memorandum and sign off from him.
So, there's gonna be a total of 6,840 batteries on site?
So, yeah, so the batteries, as we went over with Mr. Lawson, so they're battery units, so they'll look like one battery, and within that battery structure, there'll be multiple battery units, so smaller batteries within the, the greater battery structure. Those are self-contained units. You know, they're very, it's a solid lithium ion battery, similar to what you find in an electric car. They are sealed batteries, so they cannot by nature leak, and they do not have what you would think of as a liquid within them. And I can answer more specific questions.
They catch fire?
They can catch fire. I, I've never seen it happen, and it's very rare, but just like a car could eventually light on fire, there's a chance that there's fire with this, and it comes with fire suppression, direct injection, clean water, fire suppression system. So, it is planned around.
Where is the fire suppression system located?
The fire suppression system is within the overall battery structure. So, the battery structure is in something that looks similar to a boxcar. And within that, there's both a sprinkler system and a direct injection of water that would go into the individual battery units. So, there's a water skid, and as part of this proposal, we are adding additional water infrastructure to the parking lot at the fire department's request. There's gonna be.
Is there a catch for any water that is used to put out a fire?
I think, Brian, you made those adjustments, are you, are you there to answer that?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, and my name is Brian Jurgation, professional engineer from BSC Group. If I understand the question, you're wondering if there's a catch basin nearby, is that?
If, if these were to catch on fire, and you're gonna use a self-contained water suppression system, A, where does the water go? And if it comes outside of any containment, is there a containment area that you have designed to catch all this water?
No, we would, we would rely on the existing drainage infrastructure within the parking lot.
So, there'd be no toxic chemicals that come into the water as a result of putting out a battery that's on fire?
I don't have that answer.
Is that addressed with Carl Lawson?
He talked about suppression system.
If you look on page six of his memorandum, he does talk about the automatic water injection suppression system, as well as the notifications that are immediately sent to the fire department in that, in that event.
Oh, I guess my question is, is there some type of catch area to catch all this water? And if there isn't, is there a representation to this board that no toxic chemicals will run off?
Liza, it's Mike Boxton, may I speak to that?
Yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, we met on site with the fire chief from the town of Yarmouth and his deputies from fire prevention, and we came up with an emergency spill plan, operations plan on the site in case anything would happen on the site. Everybody was in agreement with the plan. We added an additional fire, uh, a, a fire hydrant out there, not only for this, but they'd never had one on our, on our site out there for an accidental car fire or something else. So, we agreed, and we've added that so that they could safely fight a fire or extinguish a fire at a safe distance from anything that might be burning. So, we had quite an extensive meeting on site with, I believe it was a fire chief and three folks from fire prevention. Thank you.
My question, I, I know you got a hose to put the fire out. My question is, after you've put the fire out, is there toxic residue from the result of a lithium battery being on fire that's gonna seep into soil and run on?
APD.
Or the APD? And I don't see it anywhere that's addressed.
Well, it is, it's referenced on page six of our Lawson memorandum. And he says, you'll see that there's a monitoring, he references monitoring, and the protocol for should an event arise. I don't see where it says somehow gonna contain all the water there, though. I'd like a follow-up, I'd like a follow-up memo from Mr. Lawson on that. I'm sure he's investigated that. I've seen, I haven't seen a lot, but I've seen a few of these electric cars light on fire before. I mean, they're pretty good blades. I don't know if that's gonna happen here, all right? But, so, so I'm gonna go back to my questions if I can, okay? And thank you very much for that input, all of you who are reporting via Zoom. So, the containment pads are, are around the, the, the cabinets that he's talking about, Mr. Lawson's talking about, is that correct?
That is correct.
For any of the materials that would, might seep from those containment?
Right, there's concrete pads, right, that are.
But with containment vessels, or, or berms.
It says here they have no containment capacity.
Brian, is there, on the concrete pads, are there berms on those?
Page three.
No, there are not.
I think the containment is actually within the container where the batteries are stored.
At some point, that container's gotta be open. Then what happens, it falls in the ground?
So, we're on, we're on impervious surface. We contract with third-party emergency response company, which I believe the town is very familiar. They get an immediate response, notification if there's any event, any type of heat event, not even a, a fire per se, but just going above the recommended heat of the battery system, in which case it would be immediately shut off. So, that eliminates most potential for any fire to happen in the first place. If those sprinklers do go off, they will send a cleanup and containment crew immediately. The idea being that it would never leave the impervious surface. If you're asking me to promise on my life that it couldn't happen, I'm not sure I can do that, but it's definitely our, our plan and what we've really planned to mitigate around. But it's definitely our plan and what we've really planned to mitigate around to so that it would not leave any of the impervious surface.
Okay, but this isn't a new issue, it was addressed in the May 17 memorandum from Kyle Lawson on behalf of the Board of Health. On page three, he talks about secondary containment of toxic or hazardous materials. And I'm just gonna, you can read it, I'm sure, I bet you're more familiar with it than I would ever be. But he goes on in part to say, "The module housings in which the batteries reside provide secondary containment, although short of the 150% required by regulation. This property abuts the APD. And we have always consistently looked to overprotect the APD, but within the limits of the regulations." And this is telling me it's not even within the regulation.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I think you need to keep reading the next few sentences, then talk about additional containment that exceeds the 150% secondary containment required by the regulation.
I get that, but I asked the question, what happens? So let's say there's a failure within this containment vessel. And now the containment vessel, if there's any fire hazard, it's been addressed. And now they open the containment vessel to remove the batteries or whatever else. The material that's hazardous to the APD that's contained within there is potential to wash out onto the pad, drip out onto the pad, and go down in the APD. And I mean, I'm just saying to you that I think that that, we've asked for containment walls of a certain height to be put around these sorts of things in the past. And when I read what he's saying here, he's talking about a cabinet. So, you know, a cabinet usually makes me think of, you know, a metal structure. And I have an awful lot of metal in my yard and different places that's rusted. You know, we live on Kedcod. So absent maintenance, proper maintenance, how do I know that cabinet isn't gonna fail? I just think that it's very simple to put a berm around these things of a particular height. And that height is usually, I don't know, six inches or so. Certainly something that we contain every bit of any hazardous material within those cabinets.
I'm surprised we're not reading that as a recommendation, quite frankly.
Daniel or Brian, do you have any thoughts on adding some berming on the pads?
Yeah, well, I don't see where it's even addressed in the.
I see the sentence.
Numbers one through 10A of the recommendations made by Mr. Lawson. So it is nothing, despite referencing it in the concerns, there's nothing in here. But I'm not sure that, merely because the Board of Health doesn't have it, that I shouldn't have it. What it does say is the toxic and hazardous materials will have secondary containment that meets this requirement of all materials being stored having a secondary containment of 150% of volume. And it says earlier, that the design that you've offered to the Board of Health did not have that. I don't mean you, which.
No, I understand.
I'm not picking on you.
And if I may, just so we're clear, the sentence after that says, "The racks have no containment capacity."
Right, and then the next sentence, which is I think what he was referring to then, to say that it's met, is the cabinets within each house, each house, within each house, one rack have secondary containment capacity that when coupled with that provided by the modules, achieve more than the 150% volume secondary containment required by the regulation.
You're reading that from the reference to the batteries on page three?
Correct.
Yeah, well, on pages four and five, where we talk about the conditions the Board of Health recommends or requires, they state very clearly at paragraph six, "All materials must be stored inside secondary containment of 150% volume of the total amount of materials stored. The toxic and hazardous materials will have secondary containment that meets this requirement." So within the cabinet, it might be contained. But they, I think they're agreeing with me that there needs to be a secondary containment. It's just a little berm, how we've dealt with in the past, and the berm that within the four corners of that rectangle around this will contain fully up to 150% of the volume of hazardous materials. I mean, I don't know what else I can say. But I'm still not done with my questions. And I'm sorry to anybody that is getting weary of this, but is there in fact a hydrant that's provided for?
Yes, it's shown on the plan that was submitted. It's just to the left of canopy number nine, where it says, "Proposed fire hydrant and future standby."
And, you know, I wasn't familiar with the case, but I've read it a little closer as I've listened to other people ask questions. And I do think it applies, I think the Dover Amendment clearly applies. It's funny, we just dealt with the Dover in our last meeting, and it's two times in part of my entire tenure on this board that it's come up.
Interesting.
Last one was about the church, can we regulate a church commercial function? But.
Dover Amendment, it's.
I think it's right there in black and white.
I do too.
So I don't know, but I can tell you this, tonight I cannot support it without evidence of a full containment as suggested by Kyle Lawson's memorandum of, well, this dates it, it was the one I just had.
I think it's May 17.
It was a May date.
May 17.
You have it?
May 17.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Sure.
Yeah, so what Carl Lawson is saying is there's a preliminary containment, which are the battery units that are on the racks, and the secondary containment is the housing of the entire batteries, the battery structure itself. And that contains the two forms of containment necessary. And we went over this with Mr. Lawson many times over about an eight-week period preceding our last hearing. So we are, I don't have any problem with providing a berm as a third measure. It seems like a low-cost, you know, solution that's gonna make you happy, and I'm happy to do it. Unless Brian sees a fundamental engineering reason why it can't be done.
I see no reason why it can't be done, Daniel.
Yeah, so.
Oh, it's not to make me happy, it's to protect the people of Johnny Island, though.
Sure, understood, understood. To add further protection for the APD and the town of Yarmouth, yeah.
I put things all around. The latest, does anybody have the latest Board of Health may? I just had it here, and for some reason I can't.
It's in her, it's inside her exhibits, yeah.
Okay. So my next question is, I think already answered by you. You did describe the language, and again, I've read the specific language of 48, section three. But I think tonight, I really wanna see a plan that comes back and shows us the berms and shows us the, if we're gonna consider it, delineate all the conditions. But perhaps you want to take the poll of the board, just to see how we're looking generally on this topic.
That would be helpful, thank you, yes.
All right, so what are your thoughts on it, Mr. Mantoni?
Well, I tend to agree with the hazardous issue that you guys have brought up. So we definitely need some form of containment in addition to what we have. But other than that, you know, I seem to think, you know, it's pretty straightforward as far as.
Okay, Mr. Igo?
Well, you've kind of heard my thoughts on it. The problem I have is with the supporting structures. I believe this requires, I believe if the board's gonna give any relief here, it should be in the form of a variance and not a special permit. I also think we're setting a very, very bad precedent here, and especially when I hear that these so-called structures and supports are all over the Cape now. Because when you drive into Stop and Shop and you start seeing them, I have a feeling you're gonna have a different attitude about them. And if we say yes to this petition, we're not gonna be able to say no to that one. And quite frankly, I think somebody should challenge this Dover Amendment a little closer, all right? Because I don't think it's just, it's our way of the highway, okay? You can't say no just because we're erected solar, all right? I think there are limitations. I think the structure should be taken into consideration. I think there are alternatives to this structure, okay? They could put them in their lower, their regular arrays, the supports. Everybody knows what they look like, you've been to a solar array before, they're eight-foot-high structures. You don't require all of this building. But if it's the wish of the board to approve this, I will not be supporting it simply because of the structures. I do have some concerns about the issues that we're talking about, containment. I would also like to see the language submitted as an exhibit by the hospital showing that these are gonna be, there's an agreement to decommission these and take them down, not just a representation by a representative. I'd like to see it as part of our.
The actual contract language, yeah.
I wanna see that, that it's gonna be decommissioned. So I mean, all you need to do is take away a tax credit and all of these things just stop, okay? All these people will have them on their roofs and everything, I mean, it's great. But my reading of how much it costs, it costs a lot more than a dollar to get a dollar's worth of solar energy. And I've heard a lot of talk about getting rid of these credits, whether they do or they don't, that's not for this board, but it's certainly something to take into consideration. So I would like to see that language if the petition is gonna come back. And I thought there was one other thing, too, that we had a concern about, I think you brought it up, Jay.
Decommissioning was my.
It was the decommissioning, okay? And the removal of the structures in the event that they stopped.
That was my primary concern.
Okay. Because I do think that's important. I would guess that the board would not like to see these sitting there if there wasn't a solar array on the top of it, I would hope.
This isn't a unique thing, when asked to consider the windmills up by the, just beyond the police station, I think it was, wasn't that where they wanted to put them? Up in the town conservation land up there? You know, there was a requirement by both the tax crediting authority and by the, you know, the contract between the town and the wind provider, wind energy provider, that there would be removal guaranteed by somebody. And you can see the problem when you see two of them over in Falmouth that have been the constant side of bickering. And I guess nobody can figure out who's gonna pay to remove them. But somebody now has to look at them for the rest of their life out their back window. So, I mean, that's gotta be contained within this, we've gotta have clear evidence of that. And I agree, not just conjecture or supposition. Jay, did you have anything you wanted to weigh in on here?
My primary thing was the decommissioning with the Dover Amendment, I don't know how you get around it. I will say that I did send, after previously bringing this forward, I did send a letter to the planning department in Yarmouth asking them to look into properly giving us better guidance, as they did in Wind, on how this should be handled in the future for structures.
Many towns across the Cape have solar bylaws.
Yeah, and we don't.
You don't.
But we should, so I did ask for that. You know, as far as the system is concerned, it doesn't directly support the hospital, which would have been nice in a way, somehow did that, but I guess it does, they get a lease out of it. So other than the other one, and I know you're concerned with the structures, but with the Dover Amendment, I don't see how we get around that, so it's kind of where I'm at.
Well, the energy has to go back to the grid, doesn't it? I think that's the only way it can operate. Mr. Martin?
Batteries. Yeah, I, in terms of this happening somewhere else, I know Sean has a concern about like Stop and Shop and what if they want to do it? But these canopies are still looked at, structures, and the overall percentage is still under 25% in terms of the structure coverage on the site. I would venture to guess that the Stop and Shop site has already got 25% of its lot coverage in building alone. And therefore, they would not be able to do it. And most other similar large parking lots with large buildings probably wouldn't have that option.
Why is that? I don't know that I'm following.
Well, the canopies are structures, they considered structures. 25% lot coverage is allowed by four structures, they're staying under 25% with this proposal. If you look at the Stop and Shop building, that's already probably taking up very close to, if not all of 25% of that lot, because the building's huge. It would be a very small building right now.
If they're relying on the Dover Amendment, that supersedes all this. They're already done it, she's already said they're up in Sandwich, they're down at the Falmouth Ice Arena, so they're coming. Just remember, you know, we can always say no and send them over to Superior Court, up to the Land Court.
I mean, they're trying to stay under that building coverage as per our bylaw. I just go over, remember, get them around that, I guess, good, yeah. You know, that's a separate problem as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I'm for this for a number of reasons. I do believe, I do agree with my compatriots here that some kind of containment berm would be appropriate for around the batteries. And some kind of agreement relevant to the structure removal, should this become decommissioned one way or another. And I could vote favorably for it with those amendments.
So when it came up, 48 came up, 48, section three came up for the last meeting. I took the time to read it and as much as I could find out about it, including some of these that, you know, have considered it in short life. I just don't see any ambiguity to the words that these structures can be made, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare. I don't know how we get around that. And certainly, if two other members feel differently than me, then it's not gonna pass. But with the concerns I've expressed and other members have expressed being incorporated into a further submission, I think I can support this. I don't think any one of us is going to be upset about getting some alternative source of energy. I think it's the future, I think it's here now. The regret maybe is that we put a golf course on our landfill instead of, like Dennis, put a solar array. I like the golf course better than looking at that, but it's there, and it's there for a purpose, so. You've heard my concerns, hopefully they'll be in a recent mission.
Yeah, so I think what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is ask to continue this hearing to your next available hearing, and then.
Well, you need to sign another extension, because this has been on file for a while. So if we have an extension agreement, and you can tell us, Dolores, what's an available night for them to come in.
Daniel, Mike, does that work for you?
Yes.
Are you, can I ask a question? Are you going to present us with the design for that containment? Because I think that's important, not just we will give you a containment. I think we'd like to see a design and an engineer certify that whatever containment you come up with is going to meet the 150% requirement in the event of a failure. So we'd like that certified by an engineer, is everybody in agreement by that?
I think that's the whole purpose of asking for, yeah. So I mean, I just can't take the representation on either one of those two topics, it's gotta be by proof.
We'll address that with, for the continued hearing, and I will.
October 7 is agreeable with everybody? What'd you say? Oh, I don't care. I'll be here.
Thank you.
Can't travel anymore, my wife says I've traveled enough. Do you have that signed agreement?
I will.
I may get it back, thank you very much, Attorney Cox, you have it.
You're going to include that, decommissioning, you're gonna include that information on decommissioning?
I will respond to that, too, with the recent.
825. Thank you very much, Attorney Cox, good to see you.
Mr. Chairman, do you need to vote to continue it, or?
Oh, yeah, we didn't even vote on it, sure. You know, thanks. Please keep me honest, everybody.
So moved.
Okay, so Ms. Iago has moved this to her second, and that's to allow the continuing to October 13. We'll do it by roll call, Mr. Martin.
Before, is there any public comment that we should be aware of, too, for the next hearing? Before, is there any public comment that we should be aware of too, for the next hearing?
Is there any what?
Public comment that we should be aware of before the next hearing? I don't think there are any letters, but members of the public.
No letters on the file. Um, I may invite anybody to come back when we have the full,
That's fine.
full application, uh, full project outline. And, uh, tell us any comments or send us in a letter if that's what they'd like to do. So, uh, we need a roll call vote on the motion to continue, Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Brapey.
Aye.
Mr. Igo.
Aye.
And Mr. Antoni.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that carries five to zero and, yeah, we'll see you that night.
Right. Thank you.
Bring us to our next and last matter, that a petition 4975 trustees of the Jolly Captain Motor Lodge condominium trust. The Association of Unit Owners of Bass River Waterfront Townhouses, uh, with an address of 1376 Bridge Street, South Yarmouth, Mass. A property in a zoning district B2 and HM, HMOD1. The applicant seeks to modify conditions of existing special permits uh, and/or seeks relief under 202.5, a use table A12 to allow year-round use of units one through 15 and unit 19. Good evening, sir. Would you tell us who you are?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, my name is Paul Tardif. I'm an attorney in Yarmouth Port and I represent the Board of Trustees over at the, uh, Bass River Waterfront Townhouses. The, uh, a little bit about the property because we are seeking to amend, um, as you indicated, uh, a couple of decisions. I think it's important to know a little bit about the property. Um, the last time it was before this board was 2010. I know that two of you actually sat on that hearing, among others. But, uh, I, I want to give, uh, the other people a little, a little history lesson. First of all, the property is the location of the former Jolly Captain Motor Lodge built approximately 1960 along the Bass River and it's the gateway to Yarmouth when traveling west from Dennis. Um, it's got the lighthouse. At that time, the lot was utilized as a 33-unit motel with four buildings, uh, with 30 seasonal units, three year-round apartments and a manager's quarters. There's also a small restaurant in the building closest to Route 28, which also housed that famous lighthouse that's still there. Uh, and the Jolly Captain himself, who stood there till about 2010 when his head blew off during a storm and, um,
Loaded down the river.
Loaded down the river.
Uh, have you found?
I think he was.
He was found. It's found over in Grand Cove around the corner. But. Ever get him back? I'll put him in my yard as a keepsake.
The handsome devil. The property itself consists of approximately 38,000 square feet. It's in the B2 zoning district and also in the HMOD1 zoning districts. In 1985, uh, application was made to bring the property into a form, a condominium form of ownership. And at the same time also change the configuration of the motel to 18 units, uh, with three year-round units, those same three year, year-round units. And then combining 30 motel rooms, top and bottom into 15, uh, seasonal units with the manager's quarters. And also some other conditions with regard to cooking facilities. The point was to bring these into a little bit more modern time. A little bit more room because we were talking about motel rooms here. And a 1960s motel room was tight. So they were joined together with spiral staircases that are still there. So there are 15 of those seasonal units plus the lighthouse unit itself. Um, and so relief was granted, um, a, at that time to modify roof lines, add some decks to, um, the, the building closest to Route 28 and some other, some other, uh, uh, conditions, um, with regard to occupancy. In 2006, the HMOD1 was created. Uh, and, uh, the motels along Route 28 were offered, uh, a way of upgrading, changing their uses away from more, away from hotels that were not functioning as hotels any longer or just poorly functioning hotels. In any event, when the bylaw was passed, uh, this little section of town got lost in the, in the shuffle and it was not even included in the HMOD. Which left, um, them out in the coal compared to other, uh, motels. So in 2008, application was again made, um, but things had changed at the property. The, uh, the application was for either a special permit or a variance in order to legalize what had become a multifamily use at the site. Uh, the applicant explained that since the 85 decision that the units, uh, were individually owned uh, and occupied by their owners or their tenants. Uh, no manager's office existed as the motel use had effectively been phased out in approximately 1993. Each of the units now had been outfitted with some sort of kitchen facilities, cooking facilities. And the request for relief was to allow for the premises to be used as 19-unit, a, a, a 19-unit multifamily residential facility, each with kitchen facilities. The board at that point was not very receptive to that, um, uh, to allow that to happen. Partly, partly I believe because it had transformed into something that it wasn't supposed to. The problem was that, um, again, a lot of the inspections had been done by the town to approve these uses. Conveyances had occurred. So now we had separate unit ownership. And so what the application was, was to try and fix this to its best use, um, at the time. Unfortunately, um, as I indicated, the bylaw didn't cover that section. So a variance was granted with a number of conditions, uh, and also urged the applicant to go back to the planning board to redraft, um, some of the bylaw, to get it in front of town meeting, to get it voted so that it could exist in some fashion. It was a two-year variance, so they gave them until 2010. So in 2010, in June of 2010, when this two-year variance was about to expire, the applicant came back and said, hey, uh, we're running out of time. We have this two years that is, uh, ticking. However, last month, meaning May of 2010, the town meeting did vote to approve it. However, it had not been approved by the Attorney General yet. The board, this board declined to, um, to grant any relief except to extend the variance, uh, until such time as the Attorney General would either approve it or disapprove it. And in August of 2010, so just a couple of months later, at that point, it was approved by the Attorney General. The applicant came back before this board for a special permit to allow the use. A number of conditions were retained from those prior decisions. And so the biggest decisions that we're dealing with tonight are that last decision, which is number 4307, as well as the initial one from 1985, which was, let's get that, 2146. So what we're asking for, there were a number of conditions, but the, but the, the real conditions that we're really looking to change tonight have to do with the use of the, of the property, um, with regard to seasons. We have 16 units there that are used seasonally. And by seasonally, I know there are different definitions of that, but this board made sure that the units were, those specific units were closed and not used or occupied during the months of January and February of every year. I think there was some concern, number one, to keep the traditional use of the property, but also to avoid, uh, year-round rentals in some fashion. The, um, there was also a condition in that last decision that said that the, uh, a register had to be maintained. Well, there's no real need for a register anymore. We have separate ownership now. Um, and it's not really that, it's not a motel any, anyway. Um, and also there was an obligation to hire security personnel to inspect the units used during those two months, uh, in the winter. The trustees are requesting the modifications for a number of reasons. Uh, there's a contingent of owners who are in those seasonal units that feel that, um, although they may not even use it s- year-round, they would like that option to do so. There are three units, units 16, 17 and 18 that are year-round and have traditionally been. And so they are really not subject to a lot of conditions here. But they wanted the, the motel units, I'll call them, really wanted the same opportunity to be able to come here, uh, on a, on a winter weekend. And to use their units. Remember that these units are total between two floors, approximately 600 square feet apiece. Uh, they don't have full cooking facilities. That's one of the conditions and we're not seeking to change that. There is a condition that on those types of units, they cannot be rented out during the months of March and, uh, February, uh, March and April. Again, to interrupt that year-round use of the property for renters. Unit owners are a little different. They can use it, but they cannot use it during January and February. So I think that, you know, basically we've been, this property's been in use for almost 60 years. Three of them have been years, year-round. I think that, uh, the other units owners would like to do that same thing. We, the, we anticipated some of the, the problems that people would have had with this. Uh, I contacted the Yarmouth Police Department and asked for a list of all police calls. For at least since 2010, when the last decision of this board was issued with a lot of conditions, to find out if we had traffic problems, if we were causing accidents, if we had crime, if we had other issues on the site. I can tell you that, um, and I submitted them to you, it's just a handful of calls. Some of them, uh, are goodwill calls. Some of them are, uh, medical issues. Um, there was, I think, one or two people claiming some items missing. That's it. There's been no real impact. Uh, you really wouldn't know that there's a, uh, a 19-unit, a multi-use, multifamily use going on there. It's very, very tame. Um, and I don't think anyone could really say that the use of these properties in January and February are going to contribute to any more traffic on the bridge. I can tell you that the, the bridge traffic is so backed up that when they come out of that driveway, usually the traffic in front of them is stopped. So there's really no risk of that. The, the bigger concern was the Board of Health. And I can tell you that I was asked to take this to this board, I want to say 14 months ago. And it's taken this long because we really wanted to work with the Board of Health to make sure that the septic systems were all working well. That the increased use of two more months would not impact the use of those systems, um, and that we were in full compliance with all of their regulations. I had meetings with Bruce Murphy at this very table. We went through each of the septic systems. There are three septic systems serving the property. Farthest building away has its own septic system. The middle building has its own septic system. And then the first building, as you come in, has its own septic system that is shared with the lighthouse and the unit attached to that. So there are three septic systems. And as you know, septic systems need to be inspected regularly. In a condominium form of ownership, they need to be inspected every three years, not two years, like a s- single family home. If there was a change of use, a change of ownership. Um, we schedule those inspections, one unit every year and it rotates back every year. I can tell you that all septic systems are working perfectly. They, um, and if you've been to the property, you understand that when you drive in, it's, it's a very high, parking area and you actually can only see one floor of these units in front of you. You drive around to the back and it drops down and then you can see what is basically a walkout unit that had been combined. The, the, um, the septic systems are all located on the, in the parking lot up on top. They're very deep. The pumps, there are, there's a pump system that is checked regularly by Bobby Hour. That's who we've used traditionally. The, um, the septic systems are working fine. The last system was just inspected, I believe in July. And that's, that report has been, uh, filed. I also filed, uh, a couple of copies of reports from the other systems as well. It takes a while to get, uh, all of that worked out there. Um, so the, I, I'm not sure if you have a memo from the Board of Health? No, but I, I can tell you. I can tell you that I did speak with Mr. Murphy this week, uh, and he agreed that, you know, good luck at the hearing. You're all set with regard to the septic systems. The result, uh, of what we'd like to see, um, as a, uh, as a result of this amendment would be that there, there are still conditions, but with those conditions that I recited removed. What would be left? That, um, all 19 units, um, at the Bass River Waterfront Townhouses could be occupied year-round basis during the months of March and April. Units one through 15 and 19, we'll just call those the motel units just to, for ease, uh, in reference.
Excuse me if I could, Paul.
Yes.
And this is, uh, these proposed, this is on page seven of your, uh.
That's correct. Yes. So I.
Memorandum here?
Yeah. I, I don't need to read them, but I just wanted you to understand that although we're asking to remove the seasonality portion of this and the register and the onsite manager, that the rest of these conditions will continue to be in effect. And that those motel units, because of their size, because of the history, are still going to be treated a little differently than those year-round units. Those year-round units are, have traditionally been there and, and operate as any other condo fo- full-time, with full kitchens for those three units. But the rest of, the rest of the units could operate, uh, in, in, uh, as a year-round unit, but again, subject to the same conditions that you have in there. So those are what we're proposing. To re-establish the special permit criteria in this case, um, there are no physical changes going on. There were no physical changes happening at this property as a result of this relief. Um, there's no significant increase in the use. I can tell you that from speaking with the trustees, that the units are, are used mostly on weekends, not even during the week, uh, in July and August. Uh, the rest of the year, it's, there are probably more than half of those motel units, we're going to refer to them as motel units, are not used at all. Um, and then the winter months, there's a lot of people that go south for the winter and they sit empty. Waters are, the water is, is turned off, um, as is required and, um, you know, it's just not to be used. But there are a few people that would like to use it, uh, in that time period. It's not going to affect the septic system in any way. The Board of Health has assured us of that. And we're not going to increase our traffic on the site. So I don't, I believe that we meet the special permit criteria for this small change. And we hope that, uh, you agree. Uh, if you have questions, uh, I'd be happy to try and answer those for you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Attorney Tardif. Uh, Mr. Martin?
I think I understand what's asked for here. I don't, uh, don't have any questions anyways. Okay.
I just had simple questions about the layout. The, the, um, the unit that is next to the lighthouse, is that 19?
The lighthouse, it's, the lighthouse itself is 19.
Lighthouse is 19.
And then that square building with two stories, that's 18 and that's a year-round unit.
Okay. And where's, I, I drove through and I saw one through 15. Where, where's 16 and 17?
Did you drive through to the end of the, the upper area and you start turning to go down?
Yeah.
That last building, if you look up, there are two full-time units.
On the second floor.
That's, uh, 16 and 17 up there.
I just was curious on the layout. That's the only question I had. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Igo?
I have no questions. I understand the request.
And how about you, Mr. Antoni?
I understand the request. I, I just have a couple of questions though. Uh, with all the parking is up top?
All the parking's up top.
Yeah.
Um, there is an additional parking area below for the boaters. Who use in the docks and the boats. So that, because you don't want to have to carry it all the way down if you have gear. So they have, I think there's about six or seven spaces down there.
So how many parking spots per unit?
One per unit, except for the year-round units, I believe have two.
16 and 17 have two.
16 and 17 have two. 18 has one. One bedroom.
And then you, you, you mentioned that they're primarily used on weekends. Are those the owners primarily using that or are they rented?
They can be rented. Um, I'd say it's about maybe half and half. I think even more you, owners actually use them. There's not, not a lot of rental. Um, that might be just odd for this year. But I can tell you that there's not a lot of rentals. There's, there's some. There's VRBO or whatever, the Airbnb, whatever. Yeah. Thank you. You're welcome.
Long torturous trek to get here from 86, huh? I see Don Henderson was chairman back then.
I think Meyer, Meyer.
And now, and now Mr. Igo and I are dating ourselves. He's been here a lot longer than me, but I've been sitting here for 12 years.
Yeah.
Come I thinking of. How many basketball games have we missed in that period? So listen, um, it, it's been a mydamorphous. Uh, I, I was looking back, trying to find some reasoning from 86, uh, to 2008 and 2010 and now to today, as to why we limited those units. And I think it was all as a, uh, as a. And I think it was all as a, as a 1986 uncertainty as to the condominium transfer of ownership interest in these hotel rooms. And we've seen that up and down Route 28 and several facilities that are very nicely kept, as is this, just a beautiful little resort. I have no other questions. Does anybody in our audience have anything they'd like to say in favor of this petition? If so, come up to the microphone and tell us who you are. You don't have to. Anybody in our audience care to speak in opposition to this petition, please come to the microphone, let us hear what you have to say. Again, you don't have to. Thank you all. So we now close it to the public input and open it up to board discussions and considerations of the request. Mr. Martin, your thoughts?
Well, I think the whole historical reasoning behind keeping them seasonal was, you know, to avoid too much crowding and families there year-round and school, school occupancy and so forth and so on. I think there's pretty much historical reasons between not allowing it. So the, the two-month, March and April will still remain as far as not being able to rent, so that would preclude any year-round rentals, obviously.
Correct.
You know, in today's housing circumstances and so forth, I, I don't know, it's, it's probably hard to make some of the same arguments we would have made 10 or 20 years ago. So I don't think I, I would be in opposition to the request.
Mr. Frapery?
I wasn't here for all the history. You wouldn't believe what you missed.
But it seems like a reasonable request. I just had one thing, and number nine, you know, I'm not sure if there's any conditions that aren't considered by these that are important, I'd have to defer. And you obviously went through them.
Well, the only reason I included that is this, we had the 85 decision, which had a number of conditions.
Yeah.
And we had a 2008 decision, had a number of conditions. Then I was of temporary variance, so that's why I'm saying, I don't really think that decision is even effective anymore because in 2010, when this finally became approved, a lot of those conditions were adopted into that one. So now we have 85, we have 2010, and now we're going to go with this one. So just for purposes of confusion, I tried to consolidate.
Consolidate. Well, and I support this, and I think what Mr. Martin mentioned, the only concern would be that, you know, March and April maintained, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Igo?
Very familiar with the history of this property. I think it's evolved, I think we realized back in 2010 that we should allow more use of this property than previous was, previously was allowed. I would note that the property to the immediate left, the former Don Beal and Ames Funeral Home is full-time, it's a year-round condominium.
Four units there, correct.
Four units there. This is really, I mean, we're kind of handicapping them. I mean, I, what they're asking for, I think, tonight is very reasonable. I think they have a very, very good track record of their conduct at this property or lack of any type of problem at this. I did read the, the police sheet that you provided. I don't know if anybody remembers when the, was it the Cape Cod condominiums, it's now the hotel up there at West Yarmouth? When they came in with the police log, it was about six pages long or something like that. 10,000 calls a year or something, it was crazy.
I think the police were praying, coming in, supporting any change.
Any change to that one, yeah. But no, this is a reasonable request and I fully support it and I do think they meet the criteria into the bylaw, so I would, I think the board is on board with it and I hope John will feel the same way.
You're only seeking to amend the condition.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, John?
Yes, I do, I fully support this, I don't see any reason why you can't occupy the units January and February. Thanks for the history lesson, I wasn't doing.
You got it. With that, Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you in your comments?
No. I wanted to say, I, I think this will increase the town of Yarmouth's tax base by making these units more valuable, which I'm sure the Board of Selectmen have contained within their goals for the town this year, and so we're complying with those goals.
What? You tell them we're going to raise their taxes?
I think it's going to, hey, listen, if they want a better unit, more, more marketable, they're going to pay more, what's that? This is Yarmouth.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the relief as requested and adopt the amended conditions as proposed by the petitioner, and that is conditions 1 through 10 as proposed on page 7 of 7 in his request, and I.
Okay.
Second.
Boy, can you have any discussion before moving along to a vote? Hearing none, Mr. Man Tony?
Aye.
You seconded, didn't you, Jay? Mr. Igo?
Aye.
And Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, that carries five to zero. I'll look forward to getting a draft decision.
Thank you. Was it Mr. Martin who seconded or Mr. Frapery?
I guess it was Mr. Frapery, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Always good to see you.
Good to see you too.
So we have one, one other real matter on, I'm sure everybody has seen the meeting notes that is always so well-kept by Ms. Fallon, and so can we just move, somebody move to approve?
Move the minutes?
Yeah.
I'm so moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
No comment, no discussion needed. Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Man Tony?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We don't need that anymore.
Who are those last two ayes?
What?
75 Route 28.
This other business.
We have something else on the agenda?
I don't understand, what are we supposed to do?
We're going to discuss whether they could move to another, a later date because they're, when they're meeting with the Conservation Commission.
Are they asking for continuance? Are they requesting continuance?
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, very much so.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, we're still conducting a meeting. If you want to have a conversation, could you have it outside? Thank you. Go ahead.
This is for 175 Route 28.
Uh-huh.
Talking about, at least having a discussion, moving that petition to a later date because they'll be meeting with the Conservation Commission on October 6th. So meeting with them on September 22nd would really be too early.
They want to meet with us?
Well, we would go, there was going to be an update on conditions, I believe, from them, and they wanted.
Where's 175, what?
It's De Palma.
Oh.
Oh, De Palma. Oh, they're coming back for review?
Right, for an update, right, exactly.
Oh, it's their review?
Right, and that would have been September 22nd, but that is prior to their meeting with CONCOM on October 6th. So we've filled up October 13th, I don't know if they need to move even further.
So we'll just, they just want to move the date?
Seems okay to me. Yeah, that's fine.
October 27th will be the next available one now.
They ought to write something formally asking that the change occur. And then, did the board members give me permission to approve that when it comes in?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, with that, somebody's moved to adjourn, there's been a second, we've all agreed, goodnight.
So moved.
Second.
She didn't second, we could have kept them sitting here.